Want to welcome you here tonight. We're just about to start. We'll call the meeting to order, but first I want to invite you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Randall Harriman will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow. Dear the Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this city and all the blessings you bestowed on it, Lord. Be with us tonight as we make decisions for the city and help us to do that in a manner pleasing to you in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Randall. All right. I'd like to again welcome you to tonight's regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is the second full, this is Tuesday, March 14th, 2023, and we'll start off with our city clerk calling the roll. Denise?
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Yes.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rex Bailey.
Here.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fujirus.
Here.
Ursus Kay.
Here.
All right. Thank you. Item four is the portion of each council meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our citizens. If we have residents that would like to address the council, we just ask that you go to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief and understand that the council won't be taking action on anything you bring forward tonight. Okay?
Okay. Good evening. I'm Angie Albright. I'm the Director at Shiloh Museum, and Anna slotted me into this part of the agenda. I just wanted to tell the council that we have hired Danielle Hatch as the Program Manager, the new position that we added to the staff at Shiloh in the budget this year, and so I just wanted you to welcome her, and she's going to say a couple things.
Great.
Thanks, Angie. I'm really excited for this opportunity to be a part of the Shiloh Museum's mission. I'm excited to work with the community of Northwest Arkansas to connect them to their cultural and natural history, so I look forward to seeing you all at a program at the Shiloh Museum soon.
That's great. Thank you, and welcome.
I'm Beck Campbell. I live at 4411 Bogie Drive in Springdale. You should have in front of you a proposed plan for a streetlight installation in our neighborhood. It was designed by AEP, which is SWEPCO. A little bit about our neighborhood. It was developed in sometime in the 1980s. There are 26 homes in our neighborhood, and we have 15 retired couples and individuals. I think there's five individuals that live alone. We have three young families with school-aged children, only one in our public schools, and the rest are semi-retired or within three, four, or five years of retirement. So we're pretty much a retirement community. We pay $85,000 a year combined in property taxes, plus personal property taxes, sales taxes, and you know, all those taxes we all love to pay. The pros of our neighborhood is that we have no through streets, so we have no through street traffic. We have mature trees. We have a lot of tree canopy, a lot of mature landscaping, no adjacent commercial properties, so we don't have that annoying light pollution that so many neighborhoods have, and we're close to Lake Fayetteville, the parks, and the trail. Those pros, however, become a real liability when you consider that we have no street lighting in our neighborhood. When you turn onto Bogie, which, you know, our neighborhood is a little H-shaped, contained neighborhood, it's just dark as mud down in there. There's nothing. There's no question that the lack of lighting is a magnet for crime. We've seen that time and again, and this is one of those issues where I feel like the city needs to be proactive rather than reactive in the steps that we take to light up our older neighborhoods. Since the early to mid 90s, we're not sure exactly what year, but the city has required developers to install street lighting in our new neighborhoods. So all of our new neighborhoods have street lighting. So obviously, as a community, we agree that it's reasonable and necessary to have street lighting in our neighborhoods. Unfortunately, we have a lot of older neighborhoods in Springdale that have no street lighting, our neighborhood being one of them since we're probably over 40 years old. I'm asking the city today to consider putting streetlights in our neighborhood. I'm asking you to drive in our neighborhood and look how dark it is, and with, again, we're mostly a retirement neighborhood, so that's kind of dangerous. Do I believe we would be opening a Pandora's Box by installing lights in one neighborhood? Yeah, I do, and I'm aware of that, and so, but I feel like that as a city, it's necessary for us to start addressing this issue on some level. We have so many older neighborhoods that need street lighting. I believe that we would have to take each case and examine it case by case, you know, each request. The cost for older neighborhoods is much less because in older neighborhoods, we have a lot of overhead power, we have a lot of power poles, we can put streetlights for about $300 on those power poles. We can't do that in our neighborhood. Again, a pro, we have underground electric, but I think we would have to look at the traffic that the neighborhoods have. Again, we have no through traffic, so you go into a dark neighborhood where there's no chance that a car's going to drive by, it's kind of a bad deal. But we need to look at the issues that the lack of lighting causes individual neighborhoods. There are programs already in place in other communities that we could mimic. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. There may be grants, I know there is, I Googled it, and other funding available for these streetlight projects. We could even take our, develop a plan where, that's modeled after our Community Block Grant, if you're familiar with that, where there's a reimbursement upon the sale of a house for that expense that the city has. In other words, there's ways to mitigate this expense that is desperately needed in these older neighborhoods. I'm here for two reasons tonight. One is kind of selfish, and I just want to know, would you even consider installing streetlights in an older neighborhood at the city's expense? The second reason is that the city needs to research the possibility of developing a program that could fund the installation of streetlights in areas in our community where we need streetlights. I'm sure the police department would agree with me. There's areas where if we had streetlights, it could help property crimes, crimes on persons, things of that nature. So I'm asking the city to really examine this issue, especially where it's related to our neighborhood, because our neighborhood is really bad. Obviously, streetlights are reasonable, and they're necessary for the safety and well-being of our citizens, and that needs to be our number-one priority, is the safety and well-being of our citizens. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell, you say there is grants. Where did you see that at?
There is. If you just Google "streetlight installation projects," there's grants. I mean, I'm not a grants researcher, I'm not a grant writer, but there are grants available for programs like this.
Ernest, would you research that and see if that falls under Community Block Grant?
It may. The Community Block Grant doesn't just do what it did for my family. It's used for other purposes, I know, and it may fall under it, I don't know. But, you know, we're a city, we've got a lot of older neighborhoods. Now, if you drive around in some of the older neighborhoods, you'll notice they've put lights up on the power poles, and that's great. Unfortunately, our neighborhood has underground power, so we don't have that option. The only option we have is to install new poles.
Let me ask you one, it doesn't pertain to this. State Representative Unger is having a horrible problem on Lake. You know any, you're on Bogie, right?
Yeah.
Do you have any problem, have you saw any problems down in there?
Yeah.
I know I have, but...
We, anybody that lives, and these are two of my neighbors, we know coming off of Bogie or getting onto Bogie, we just assume that whoever's coming east or west is not going to stop at those stop signs. I'm probably 150 feet from that intersection. There's a house between me and Lakeview, but I can't sleep with my bedroom windows open because they drag race down Lakeview. We've called the police, we've met with city councilmen, I think neighbors on Lakeview have met with the mayor. There's, it's just not getting any better, really.
Well, the chief is aware, I've talked to the chief. So I knew you lived in there close.
Yeah. I'm right at the end. I'm in the, like, if you turn onto Bogie, I'm the first house on the right, but it's really bad. But I would appreciate it if anybody has any questions or comments about this. Really what we're doing tonight is just trying to figure out, is this even a reasonable request? And I would invite all of you to drive down into our neighborhood and see what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Beck. Go ahead.
Curtis Leister, 6337 Applestead. A year ago, I was here to ask you about the Bradford pear trees, if you remember. I have this QR code that will take you to Missouri's Buy Back Tree Program. The Master Natural will help source it, the trees, all right? So it's a fraction of what you think it might cost. It would do a great honor to what our reputation is in the city, so keep it short. And I'll personally cut down the Bradford pear trees in front of the Kmart on Sunset Street.
All right. Thank you. There you go.
Hey, good evening. My name is Mike Lemaster, and I'm here to talk about America's fastest-growing sport, pickleball. And Springdale has generously applied Parks and Rec over by Shiloh Christian. They've given us seven indoor pickleball courts. The reason it is so popular and so growing in such a spurt is because people like myself, I'm 76 years old, probably play above average. I've lost over 30 pounds playing. It is a healthy endeavor. It's a socialization that got myself and many others through the pandemic. We met at outdoor courts because we couldn't, there was no place indoors to play. I'll tell you a dirty little secret, I actually live in Fayetteville, but I come and spend money in Springdale every day, and I've told the Fayetteville people that, as do others. We come to Springdale Parks and Rec because you all are more forward-thinking. Fayetteville likes to think they're first with everything, but they're not. And so we're hoping, and I think we have a meeting later this month with some of your officials, but we're just a grassroots group. We have no standing other than we're retired. We have money to spend, but we also are concerned about our health, and we, if you've ever been competitive in high school or junior high, you never lose that competitive edge, and it kind of, we all have an itch, competitive itch, and that pickleball allows us to scratch that itch. And I would invite anybody who is interested, you don't, this is really started by two old guys in Washington to entertain their grandsons, who were, their grandkids, who were bored over a weekend, and they stretched a, some type of net and used homemade paddles and a wiffle ball. It's how this sport actually started back in the first mid 60s, and it has grown and grown. Now, major sports stars are buying in, buying franchises. There'll soon be a professional league, major sports stars like Drew Brees, LeBron James, big names, Michael Jordan. They're buying franchises because there will soon be a pro league of it, and listen, these tournaments bring in 100 people to play, and guess what? They rent your motel, your hotels, they eat at your restaurants, they go to your clubs, but they come with one single motivation, that is to play in tournaments, and that's usually, it's a doubles tournament, so there's at least four people coming, or at least two people coming to represent, and they come from all over the state. Anyways, I'll be brief here. I just wanted to bring, put that out on the agenda and say thank you, Springdale, for providing the Parks and Rec opportunity for all of us. There's 30 or 40, sometimes we've had as many as 50 people there. We've had to bring in racks because we want to have seven courts. The people at the Parks and Rec are most gracious. We really appreciate them. I'll give them a big shout-out because we, they all know, they know all of us by name, and I think it's really helped their numbers, and especially in the demographics of people over 60 coming in there. So anyways, appreciate your time tonight.
Mike, let me ask you, yeah, let me ask you a question. First of all, I haven't played pickleball yet. Sandy and I have talked about it. We're going to, and we got friends that play, but you seem to know some of the history. Do you know how the name came to be?
Erroniously, all of us first heard that it was the fellow, one of the guys that owned it had a black lab named Pickles, and that's, and that makes for a nice story, but I've since heard that that's been, that's been debunked.
Fake news.
Yeah. And I don't know exactly where it comes from, and it's such a squirrely name, but people that play it, they're absolutely, here's, raise your hands down there, there's four people that I play with every day, five people.
Okay.
Including myself.
Well, somebody better figure out how it started, how the name started, or the people down in Atkins are going to jump all over it.
All right. Well, we could, you know, if they'd help us build some pickleball course, we'd probably tell them, we'd probably lie a little bit and say it came from Atkins, but anyways, hey, we don't have to compete with tennis, and the good thing about pickleball is you can fit four, maybe six pickleball courts on one tennis court. So that's why, that's why people our age play it, because you can, you don't have to cover a court six times the size of the one that we're on.
Right.
Now, you got to have quick reflexes. It's, a lot of people have paralleled it to a big game of ping pong.
Yeah.
And it's very, very similar to ping pong, and you slice the ball like you would a ping pong, and you use a paddle that can't be over 17 inches long. It has a tennis handle, but it's actually a solid surface paddle, and of course, the ball is like a wiffle ball. It's hollow with little holes drilled in it to make it aerodynamic, and it's also, and there's a different ball that they have made with more holes and smaller for outdoor play to keep the wind resistance down, and it's, you can't play outdoors on a real windy day, 15 miles an hour. It, you know, you'll hit a nice shot, and if you see it, the wind will blow it right out of bounds. So it's kind of frustrating, so we all, that's why we really appreciate the Parks and Rec Center.
Okay, great.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any other public comment tonight? Okay. We'll move on then. Thank you all for being here, all of you who spoke. We're at item five, approval of minutes. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. What's your pleasure on procedural motions, counsel?
I move for A and B.
Motion to second for A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus.
Yes.
Carrie 7-0.
All right. Thank you. And now we've got Ann Gresham, Ann, and I think some other folks from the library board and the library. Welcome, Ann. You're going to bring us a presentation on some things in the library today.
Thank you all for your time tonight, and I will be brief. I did want to come before you to give you an update on what the library is currently offering and where we hope to be headed in the future, and I'll also be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me. I have two members of my board here and one member of my staff here as well, and thank you all for coming tonight. Let's see. It's just an arrow, I can't mess that up, right? There we go. All right. Libraries do a lot in the 21st century, and we're very proud of innovations in the field like electronic resources and expanded events and programming, but we are still very much a library in addition to everything else that we offer. We currently shelve about 180,000 items in our facility, and about 8,000 of those are in Spanish, and about 59,000 of them are for children. That's about a third of our collection, and I'm not just talking about books. We also offer DVDs, audiobooks. We have launchpads, which are tablets that are preloaded with educational software on a specific topic like spelling, or math skills, or personal finance. There's a wide range. We also have something called Wonder Books. These are picture books that include an embedded audio narration device, and those are a wonderful tool for young readers who are working toward literacy goals. We have music CDs. We also check out fishing poles that we have through the Arkansas Game and Fish Commission, and that works very nicely with our neighbor, Murphy Pond. And we check out internet hotspots through T-Mobile, which do provide high-speed internet service. Those check out for two weeks. One of my favorite collections we have are Storytime and Steam backpacks. Our Storytime backpacks include music, books, craft supplies, everything a parent or educator would need to recreate a library storytime experience at home. And we also have Steam backpacks, which include lesson plans and materials to support science, technology, engineering, arts, and math education. One of them has a microscope, one of them has a functioning cash register. They are a lot of fun to use, and they can offer a really enriched educational experience outside of a traditional classroom. Nope, wrong direction. There we go. Now, one of the most significant shifts in library service everywhere has been the move towards streaming and downloadable resources. Now, SPL has provided eBooks and digital audiobooks since 2009-ish, I believe, but the pandemic certainly accelerated the need for a very strong digital presence for American libraries. Right now, through services like Libby, Hoopla, Canopy, and Freegal, the Springdale Public Library is offering over 2.5 million pieces of digital content for free with a public library card, and we also provide access to things like virtual homework help, resume builders, we have online test prep applications for things like the ACT, the GRE, and the GED, as well as occupation-specific testing. We have LinkedIn Learning, which offers an amazing set of workforce development tools. It offers courses and certificates in IT and business skills, as well as other things. For more recreational purposes, we have Creative Bug through JoAnn Fabric, which offers craft tutorials. We've also built some very successful library programming based on this, and we have access to digital newspapers from around the country and primary sources, which can be invaluable for our students who are participating in the annual History Day program. I will leave it there for now. There is more, though, and I am happy to discuss any of these resources anywhere, anytime, so please reach out if anything sounds interesting to you. Now, even if you do prefer to read or listen to your library books on your phone, there are still plenty of reasons to come visit us in person. Our staff do a phenomenal job of offering a variety of free public programming for all ages. We have weekly storytimes for babies, toddlers, preschoolers, elementary-age students, young adults, and adults, and we have community art displays in our gallery every month. We've featured art from the Senior Center Art Class before. Right now, we have a fantastic exhibit from the Quilt Guild of Northwest Arkansas up that I would invite everyone to come take a look at. We've hosted music and dance performances, as well as wildlife educators, visiting authors, guest lectures, and much more. We also have regular book clubs and sewing classes taught by professional sewing instructors that we hold on with library sewing machines for that purpose. We have ESL classes that are provided through NWTI, and we have a staff-led Spanish Conversation Club. It's brand-new, and it's for language learners who are looking to practice their language skills. We also have opportunities for teens to volunteer in the community. Our Young Adults Advisory Board is an incredible group of young people. They've organized a donation drive for Peace at Home that was very successful. They've worked with the animal shelter to complete some projects. Right now, they're working with Parks and Rec for a Murphy Park cleanup project. We are very proud of them and the work that they're doing out in Springdale. And of course, there is also our annual summer reading program. Summer reading is a lot of fun, and I do not want to downplay that aspect of summer reading, but it does serve a very serious purpose. Summer reading is designed to help shore up our students against summer slide, which is a documented loss of literacy skills that can occur over the summer months. The library is absolutely here to work with our schools and with our students and with our families through that, throughout the school year, as well as during the summer, to help with community literacy support. And this is the slide of things that we do that tend to surprise people. We do have seven notary publics on our staff, and we do notarize documents for free. We have printers, scanners, copiers, and a fax service. We also have a meeting space that's available for local nonprofits, community and student groups, when it isn't in use for library programming. And our staff are not the Geek Squad, per se, but we are happy to work with patrons to talk you through basics like setting up a new email address, or transferring documents to and from a flash drive, or working with the formatting features of Word. And I also included some photos of our staff on this slide because I believe that our staff are one of the most valuable resources that we offer, Springdale. We have 36 positions at the library, 21 full-time and 15 part-time, and this is a group of people who will do anything they can to help, whether someone comes in looking for a book they read 15 years ago with a blue cover, and we love these, and I'm very serious, it is a point of professional pride for us to solve that mystery, or perhaps somebody is here with a new medical diagnosis, and they're looking for resources to help them navigate that, or maybe they found a bug in their garden and would like to identify it, and that is a true story, or perhaps they're looking for a list of community resources to help them deal with food insecurity. If we can't find the answer, we are trained to find someone who can, and it is true that most of us who work in a library do like to read. However, anyone who is successful working in a library likes to work and help people, and I cannot stress enough how hard our staff work to help everybody that comes through our doors. Oh, and one other thing I did want to mention that I skipped over, and I apologize. One of our most incredible services, in my opinion, is our homebound delivery program. Every month, our staff deliver materials to Springdale residents who are unable to physically come to the library. We serve private residences. We also go to long-term care facilities. It is fairly labor and time-intensive, but we feel that it is a vital service and well worth the time and effort to complete it. One of the biggest challenges any public library faces is barriers to use, and we are always looking for creative ways to overcome those barriers. I think our homebound program is a great example of that. All right. And these are some numbers I have for you from our 2022 year. All of them compare very favorably with our 2021 statistics. That is admittedly a low bar, to be honest with you. We are on the right track for our pandemic recovery, but we are hoping to make up more ground in 2023. I do want to mention the somewhat absurd programming comparison up there. That 1,000% increase in program attendance is not a rhetorical flourish. We actually did see that much of an increase from 2021 to 2022, and that is because we had admittedly limited success with virtual programming. Once we began in-person programming in early 2022, our numbers went through the roof. Now, our circulation statistics, by which I mean our checkout statistics, have been trending upwards. They have not reached pre-pandemic levels yet. Our programming statistics, though, have surpassed pre-pandemic numbers, and so that's really an area that we're focusing on as a driver of success, and it clearly meets a community need. We're hoping that we can bring people in that way and leverage it as a gateway to everything else the library has to offer. And finally, this is my last slide for you. I wanted to give you a sense of where we're focusing our energy right now. We are really thinking hard about where the library might fit into the Springdale's very bright future. Before we get ahead of ourselves, though, we want to make our existing library the best it can possibly be so that we can make the best case for that future to you and to Springdale residents. To that end, we're currently working on a facility Fix-It Inventory, is how we're branding it. Once we have that in place, we'll be able to sort our priorities, do some ballpark costing, and ideally present a plan to our board and to you that engages multiple revenue streams and results in a library that Springdale residents can all be proud of. As I mentioned, we're also hoping to boast our circulation statistics to 2019 levels and to increase our level of outreach within the community. One way we can do that is to work more closely with fellow city departments. There is so much that we admire and can learn from that's taking place in the Parks Department, at the museum, at the Senior Center, and all across the city. We're also exploring partnerships to help us build organizational capacity. Our educational partners, like NWTI, make it possible for us to offer things like ESL and citizenship classes that our staff may not have the expertise to lead. We do have the location, and we do have the audience to market to. We work with quite a few organizations throughout Northwest Arkansas, including Amaziam and Crystal Bridges, and many other, many other places to provide high-quality public programming at no cost. One thing we are particularly thrilled about right now is developing a closer relationship with the Downtown Springdale Alliance. Since the geographical boundary has been expanded in the new plan, we are absolutely thrilled to be a partner, and we are working to do the best work we can with them. And that is what I have for you tonight. My contact information is here. Please do not hesitate to reach out by phone or email if there are ever any questions that I can answer for you, and we hope you'll all come see us at the library. I would love to show you around if it's been a while since you've been in. I'd also be happy to answer any questions you have for me right now.
I don't have a question, but I just want to say that I am just really impressed by Ann's willingness to open lines of communication with the council, to meet with us, to inform us, you know, constantly. It's just, it's impressive in such a short amount of time how much hard work you can see that, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, and please let me know if I start driving you crazy. Okay. I have a lot to say, so.
So, Ann?
Yes, sir.
My phone's not working.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was pushing the wrong button. I'd encourage you to give us a refresher during the budget process because there's a lot of those programs that I've had questions about and would love to ask you more specifics about.
Yes, sir.
We don't have time tonight, but I think that'd be a good time to maybe put your slides on a flyer or something and come back during the budget process and...
Absolutely.
Where we could ask questions, that'd be really good.
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions for Ann?
I'm always reminded of all the things the library offers that I forget about or don't know about. You mentioned the microfilm.
Mm-hmm.
I remember going and looking at that stuff when I was a kid. And I'm sure that you've got a lot more microfilm now than you did then. I'm sure. You started in 1890, I think, but...
Is that when you were a kid?
Yeah. Yeah, we graduated together, remember? So, but the... Is there a way... I'm sure you've got a different apparatus to look at that.
We do. The technology is vastly improved from when I was in high school dealing with...
Is there a way... Can you... Can we capture images if we go back to an old newspaper and we want to capture an article or an image, a picture?
Absolutely. We have a really good microfilm reader right now, and it includes lots of editing options, too, so you can sharpen, you can crop. It's very cool, and we're very proud of it, and we really want folks to use it, so don't hesitate to come see me if I can give you a demo.
Great. Thank you. And thank you, board members who are here and staff who's here, and please express our appreciation and support to the rest of the board and the rest of the staff. Okay? Thank you. Thank you again, Ann.
Thank you.
All right. Eight is appointments. And Angie is still here. I don't know if you need to come, Angie, but you're welcome to. I'll go ahead and read this. It's a resolution making reappointments to the Shiloh Museum Board of Trustees for the City of Springdale. And you've got the appointees, prospective appointees listed there in your packet. We've got four.
They're great people. That's about all I have to say. We have a whole slate of new people that we're going to be hopefully nominating next week and bringing to you. We're building back up a board that got reduced in the last couple of years.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Sorry, we have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Carrie 7-0.
All right. Thank you. Rick, are you handling Patsy's role tonight? Item 9, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations. Rick Barry.
All right. This is a replat of Lot's 4 and 5 of Black Oaks Plaza subdivision on, well, Black Oak and Chester Place. Let's see. It was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission at the March 7th meeting. The official title of the ordinance is "An Ordinance Accepting the Replat of Lot's 4 and 5 of Black Oaks Plaza subdivision to the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and Declaring an Emergency."
The ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room that needs to speak to this? Okay, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
The ordinance clause be adopted.
Second.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes. Both the ordinance, emergency clause, Carrie 7-0.
All right. Thank you. Item 10, Police and Fire Committee, and Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We had one item come before us at the last committee meeting, and it's a resolution. I'll read the title now, and this was forwarded with recommendation for approval. Title of the resolution is "A Resolution to Waive Competitive Bidding and to Appropriate Funds for Building Security." And Chief Campbell's here, if anybody has any questions.
Now, did we increase the amount? Do we...
Yes, it's on Section 2. That includes the five-year warranty.
Thank you.
For those of you that aren't aware of what this is, this is for our...
Sorry, that's four-year warranty.
This is for our baggage scanner, correct? It will be part of...
Correct. That's an x-ray machine that scans bags, the new entrance to the city building when it opens.
Chief, you said there'd be just one entrance, right?
Correct. There'll be one main entrance to the whole city. Everybody will enter through during business hours, after hours. That'll be closed, and everybody will enter through the police department. The entrance we have open right now.
That entrance, for those of you who don't know, will be south of us, entering underneath the large part of the two-story section of Phase 2 when that's complete, hopefully within a few months.
If you're picked up on a warrant, you get in the back, though, right?
Do, ma'am.
If you get picked up on a warrant, you come in through the back, right?
Well, actually, there's a different place to come in for warrants, in the back of the police department back here. You're actually correct.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Denise?
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes. Both the ordinance, emergency clause, Carrie 7-0.
All right. Thank you. Item 11, and the Chairman Overton of the Ordinance Committee has not made it yet. He said he might be late, but he's going to miss his section here. But would somebody like to take that, or...
I'll take it.
Okay.
Ordinance Committee has one item on the agenda, and it is as follows. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, to adopt the 2021 Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, forwarded from committee with recommendation for approval. And Ernest Kate will help explain that.
Yes, it just amends the two sections in the code where it makes reference to the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, updating it to the 2021 edition.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Denise?
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fujirus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, Carrie 7-0.
All right. Thank you. Now for the moment you've all been waiting for.
All right. Am I on? City Council and residents of Springdale, it's my privilege tonight to bring you my 2023 State of the City address. To sum things up in a sentence, the state of the city of Springdale is strong. Even during a time we've all been challenged by some of the issues we see at the local and state level, as well as nationally, we can still say we've been blessed beyond measure. More challenges... I'm sorry. More than ever before, Springdale is best positioned to meet the serious challenges we all must face during these times of uncertainty. We continue to face the inevitable pressures caused by our rapid growth, but we've been blessed with the resources necessary to navigate those pressures. When we consider the unobligated portion of our general fund and designated reserves, we're approaching nearly $30 million in uncommitted reserves. That figure still doesn't include another $9 million in unobligated but restricted ARPA funds. These reserves are the healthiest we've had by a long shot. And while it's nice to have a little more breathing room financially than we've had in the past, we must always remember whose money that is. And when I don't remember it, y'all help remind me. And you're good at that, and I appreciate it. While it is important for a city to have enough money and reserves to continue to operate during down times, the purpose of a city isn't to build a big bank account. The purpose of a city is to take stewardship of the taxes our residents entrust to us and return it to them in the form of services. For many years, as we've worked hard to address growth, we've had our share of financial struggles, being forced to squeeze everything possible out of a dollar. And I want to assure our taxpayers that that attitude will continue in Springdale. It's in our DNA. In times of plenty or when times are rough, we will always strive for ways to be as efficient as possible, finding new and more effective ways to inform and serve the people of Springdale. Even in what looks like a slowing economy, at least for the time being, Springdale is booming, from downtown to our overlay district and all points in between, really in every part of our city. Both residential and commercial development continues at a rapid pace, and that means we can't let up. We not only have to address what's happening today, but we have to continue to prepare for the years ahead. Twice in the 14 years I've served as mayor, our voters have stepped up with strong support for bond initiatives that have given us the ability to fund projects that not only help address current growth, but projects that have spurred development, providing needed resources to serve our growing population. Given the success and strong support for those two previous ballot measures, I'm thankful this city council has unanimously approved another bond issue vote for May 9th. We'll never take our voters' support for granted, but I'm hopeful our voters will consider our track record of choosing projects wisely and building what we say we're going to build. And it's always important to add that, just as with our two previous bond initiatives in 2012 and 2018, this next one we'll be asking the voters to approve won't include any increases in taxes. In May, our voters will see four categories, four main categories of projects we will be asking them to consider. First will be a senior center, a new senior center. We're asking voters to approve funding to build the new center for our seniors. The new building will add much-needed space for programming to accommodate our growing senior population. Also included will be a commercial kitchen that will enable our center staff to serve lunches through the week and prepare food for our Meals on Wheels program. We've acquired the property for the new center, and design is currently underway. The center will be located on East Emma Avenue, just east of the old Washington School Building, and immediately south of the Jones Center. Very soon, I expect to bring forward, for your consideration, a contract for construction management services. It's important that, at this stage, we now engage a construction manager to work with the design so that they can identify any issues or work through any issues early on in the process. So that should be coming soon. The second ballot initiative that our voters will be asked to consider are park improvements. Our residents have always been great supporters of our Parks and Recreation Department, both in programming and our facilities. Approval of our park bonds will allow for much-needed improvements and upgrades to many of our park facilities. Improvements such as artificial turf on many of our existing sports fields, upgrading to LED lighting where needed, additional parking at some of our busiest parks, and finishing the last remaining renovations at our Amazing Rec Center, which you've heard some about tonight. Thank you, Mike. You know, that Parks and Rec Center, it was purchased with a portion of our 2018 bond issue, our last bond issue. What a bargain that facility has been for the people of our city. When all renovations are complete, and including the purchase price, we'll have a total investment of less than $10 million for a building and parking that would easily cost $30 million to build today, and that doesn't include land costs. While quality parks, trails, and our rec center provide direct benefits to our residents that use and enjoy them, they also generate a significant return on investment. By attracting thousands of visitors annually through our various events and sports tournaments, people from outside our city fill our hotels and restaurants, helping support our local businesses and providing tax revenue that helps all of our residents. Number three will be a fire station number 10. Now, we actually plan on building two fire stations beginning later this year. One will be the relocation of Station 4 that we've talked about a lot. We're moving from its current location on Elm Springs Road to property we own on Huntsville Avenue, just west of Central Junior High. Station 4 will be paid for primarily out of our general fund reserves, generated by savings resulting from paying allowable first responder salaries and overtime out of ARPA lost revenue. Approval of this ballot question, though, will allow us to build and equip a new Station 10, which will be located somewhere in the north-central portion of Springdale. Also, we'll be able to add specialized space and equipment to meet additional training needs. And the fourth category, roads. And by far, the largest portion of funds, as with every bond issue we have, the largest portion of the funds generated by these bonds will be used to build and improve our transportation infrastructure. As in previous bond programs, most of the specific road projects are yet to be determined and will be decided by this council. However, some are subsequent phases of ongoing projects that we know we need to continue. These projects that have completed design or are currently being designed are in various stages of right-of-way acquisition. These include the Harbor-to-Emma Avenue overpass at I-49, Phase 2 of 64th Street from Watkins, south to the future Don Tyson Parkway extension, and Jean George Boulevard from Elm Springs Road north to County Line Road, including County Line then, County Line Road west to Shaw Family Park. Design is also underway for the extension of Sunset between Turner and Powell downtown. There are also two federally funded projects in our overlay district out by the ballpark. Those two projects are Don Tyson Parkway west to Highway 112, and the two remaining phases of Jean George Boulevard further south from New Hope to Johnson Mill Boulevard. Our 20% match for those federal funds can also be paid out of these street bonds. Within a couple of weeks, Garver Engineering will be presenting to this council the results of a traffic and active transportation study they've been doing for our city. We can use these results to help us identify new street connections to consider, as well as improvements to existing streets and intersections that can help move traffic more efficiently throughout the city. The increase in population density we are seeing in our downtown and many other older, more established areas in our city is both welcomed and necessary. It makes sense to do what we can to encourage this increased density anywhere we can. As density increases, so does the efficiency of providing services for the residents of an area. But as density increases, so too does the strain on older infrastructure. That's true for streets and intersections, but it's just as true for trails, sidewalks, and parking. That's why the Garver Study also includes active transportation needs. This information will help us address all forms of transportation and connectivity as density continues to increase regardless of how people choose to travel from point A to point B. There is one other important benefit to approving these bonds I hope everyone will remember. As a result of restructuring of the current bonds, we will be able to pay off the existing bonds that are paid out of our general fund right now. I'm not going to get into all the weeds on this, but the bottom line is, by approving all of the ballot questions on May 9th, we will not only generate approximately $130 to $160 million for new projects, but we'll also free up... of weeks, Garver Engineering will be presenting to this council the results of a traffic and active transportation study they've been doing for our city. We can use these results to help us identify new street connections to consider, as well as improvements to existing streets and intersections that can help move traffic more efficiently throughout the city. The increase in population density we are seeing in our downtown and many other older, more established areas in our city is both welcomed and necessary. It makes sense to do what we can to encourage this increased density anywhere we can. As density increases, so does the efficiency of providing services for the residents of an area. But as density increases, so too does the strain on older infrastructure. That's true for streets and intersections, but it's just as true for trails, sidewalks, and parking. That's why the Garver study also includes active transportation needs. This information will help us address all forms of transportation and connectivity as density continues to increase regardless of how people choose to travel from point A to point B. There is one other important benefit to approving these bonds I hope everyone will remember. As a result of restructuring of the current bonds, we will be able to pay off the existing bonds that are paid out of our general fund right now. I'm not going to get into all the weeds on this, but the bottom line is, by approving all of the ballot questions on May 9th, we will not only generate approximately $130 to $160 million for new projects, but we'll also free up over $4 million each year in our general fund, all without any increase in taxes. An extra $4 million annually will enable us more flexibility by letting us take advantage of opportunities for bidding small improvements when the time is right. It will also allow us to be more responsive when we have a small project that can make a big difference for a neighborhood or maybe an intersection. As of our last update, we should be moving into our newly renovated city hall by sometime in May. It's been a long process, much longer than anticipated, and to say we're all looking forward to it is an understatement. Having several of our city departments spread out all over downtown is not ideal. It's not ideal from a city staff and collaboration perspective, but more importantly, it has inconvenienced our residents who need to do business with our various city departments. We are thankful that we're just about there. And all things considered, building a project of this size during a worldwide pandemic, significant supply chain interruptions, historic labor shortages, and 40-year-high inflation is not something I would recommend to anyone, but for all involved, from our architect to our contractor to the patience and flexibility of our city staff, the finish line is in sight. We'll look back on this as a job well done, and none of this would have been possible without the vision and support of the voters of Springdale, who overwhelmingly approved this project. As a result, we will have a facility with room to grow that will meet the needs of our residents for decades to come. Over the last few years, administration, as well as all other departments, have held the line as much as possible on creating new positions. For one thing, we didn't have the physical room to put additional people while in our temporary offices, but the bigger reason is that we need to get settled and get a good feel for our new space. So over the next couple of budget cycles, you might see some requested changes to staffing and organization as we figure it all out, but I know this council will support any changes that make sense for the people we're put here to serve. Before closing, and there's no applause, please, and there is so much more I could talk about, I want to encourage you and our residents to visit our newly launched website at springdalear.gov. I hope those who use our city website will not only appreciate the new look, but that all the important information that is available will be easier to access than ever before. At the same time, we also launched an app that makes important information about Springdale even easier to access. Just search "Springdale AR" in the App Store and download it for free. We hope these tools will improve our ability to get important information out to our residents more easily, while at the same time ensuring transparency by having important information at your fingertips. Okay, so that's enough for now, and I want to thank you, council. Thank you for serving the people of Springdale. I know it's not always easy, but you always make the decisions that you think are best for those you serve. I know there are times when we don't all agree, but as long as we all know, we're each doing what we think is best, I think we'll all make it just fine. I thank all those who serve on our Planning Commission, along with our various other commissions, boards, and committees. None of this works without you. I always thank my friends and family for their support and constant encouragement, and of course Sandy, who's here tonight, she's making her annual visit to the city council. She puts up with a lot and still allows me the freedom and the grace to serve as I think necessary for our residents. I can never end this without thanking God for the opportunity to do what I do. All blessings and anything good that comes as a result of anything I do is because of Him. He allows me to love this city, to love my job, to love the people I work with, and to love the people I work for. Thank you, and God bless you. And if that seemed long to anyone, that's probably the shortest one I've ever done. So consider yourself doubly blessed tonight. All right, we are at item 15. Do we have any comments from the city council?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to follow up on the streetlights. Do we have any... Are we looking into that? Can we at least get possible options to consider or...
Well, we... Oh, I'm sorry. Traditionally, and James is here, and he's talked with Beck Campbell quite a bit. She's been very kind, and she's just asking that the city pay for these streetlights. That is not what we normally do, as you probably know. We've done streetlights. We've added streetlights to other older neighborhoods, but the neighborhoods, the people of the neighborhood paid for the installation, and then we take on the utility costs.
Mm-hmm.
And she mentioned it tonight about opening a can of worms, but we can sure look at some of those options if y'all want to do it at a committee meeting and see what we may want to do. I mean, I...
I mean, we don't even know if it's expensive or not.
Well, we know this...
You may, I don't.
We know this is $38,000.
What is, for her streets?
For their neighborhood, yeah. And I forget how much that figured per resident, James. Do you have that? Do you remember that figure? Around $1,400 per resident? So there would sure be concerns if we decided to do that. I mean, you know, when people... I live in an older neighborhood without streetlights and...
So if one neighborhood got in, another would...
That would be my concern, but we can sure talk about some... There may be other funding options that would work. She mentioned some grants. I don't know whether those are available or not and...
Or the CDBG.
Or the CDBG, but again, even with CDBG, you know, usually those are for... Those are more for...
Older neighborhoods.
Older and maybe higher...
Yeah.
Lower-income neighbors, yeah. And but if y'all want to, if y'all want, we can do a little research on it and bring Beck back to a committee meeting if y'all want to, either the next one or the one after.
I don't know that we need to bring her back.
Okay. Well, we'll probably need to invite, let her know we're doing it.
None of y'all served while we were doing the links.
Yeah. Yeah, so, but let us, if y'all want to, I wasn't, I'm not going to bring it forward, but if one of y'all want to bring it for discussion at a committee meeting, I think that'd be great.
I think it would involve a process, you know, something similar as our traffic committee or something like that where, you know, neighborhoods or somebody can apply for something, but there's steps to which before something is committed to, you know, that they look into the crime in that area or in that neighborhood.
And how many neighborhoods are we talking about, you know, would be another thing?
Right. So I think there's a lot to look into and maybe...
Because, like she said, a lot of the newer neighborhoods do have streetlights, so...
And also, Jeff, a lot of them have something older inside.
The above-ground power lines, you can put them on power poles, right?
Right. Yeah, I just know that there's a lot more that don't have streetlights than do.
But now, a lot of the lights that are on the power poles are in backyards, too, as opposed to on the street.
That's true. Let us, let us look at it, and we'll have, we'll at least have, bring a discussion forward. Yeah, we'll have a discussion about it, and I think that's basically what Beck was asking for tonight.
Sure.
We look into it and see if there are options. I'm not real optimistic about it from, that I could support, but that's, obviously, those are going to be your decisions anyway, so we'll just, we'll just bring it forward in the next committee meeting, or maybe, we may wait two committee meetings, depending on how. The next committee meeting is spring break. We may, yeah. Yeah, give us a little time. Okay. Anything else, council? City attorney?
Nope.
I have nothing else. I've said enough. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much, and thank you all for being here tonight.